Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled 2023 Final Budget and Regular Meeting. The Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township, December 12, 2022. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
President.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief.
The flag of the United States of America. And to be followed with which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
God bless America.
Thank you. Welcome all. Next on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes for registered speakers and 20 minutes for agenda items. Our sole registered speaker this evening is Michelle Alvery. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to say thank you very much on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board for adding two more full-time employees to our park maintenance staff. It is something that is desperately needed and it will greatly improve the maintenance of all of our parks and facilities. And just to give Jason O'Brien a little kudos, he really does a lot with the limited resources he has, including, whether all of you know it or not, he installs and assembles all of the playground equipment that we've been buying over the years and putting in the parks. And if he didn't do it, it would cost us a lot more money to have the companies that sell that to us install it. So I just want to say thank you so much. He really needs these two new full-timers. He also needs the two new trucks that go with it. And thank you for continuing to fund the capital projects that we have in our parks so that everybody's park will have improvements over the course of time. So thanks and great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alvery. And perhaps we can get Jason O'Brien to help us build toys on Christmas morning.
He's not building toys.
He's obviously very good at that.
He is. His crew is.
So we will move to 20 minutes Agenda Items. I will start, as I always do, on the left. Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room who would like to address the board on one of our agenda items? Seeing none. Is there anybody on the right? Seeing none. This is an easy response to the comments. Ms. Alvery, you're welcome. We now move to a very important part of the meeting, which is our final budget meeting for 2023. This is our budget hearing and adoption. First on the agenda is for us to review any changes to the 2023 preliminary budget. I will call on my colleague, Commissioner McCluskey.
So we discussed the changes at the work session last week. There are, there's also additional purchases that were budgeted for prior years that because of supply chain issues or that they just haven't come through yet, we have not actually paid for. But in terms of good budgeting practices, they will be rolled over into the 2023 budget. But that money will also come from, carry forward from our fund as it was budgeted in prior years. So for instance, you'll see on the sheet that Amy sent everyone. There's a sanitation truck that was budgeted for 2021. There's a scadium edger for 2022, highway equipment for 2022, and a sanitation truck via DEP grant for 2022. And those are the largest changes. As Commissioner Hart pointed out in last week and brought up, we also are going to allocate $60,000 from ARPA funds to go into Parks and Recreation for noise-quieting walls to be installed behind the pickleball courts at Paddock, the Grange, and there's one more field, at Westgate. And so, but that money will come out of ARPA funds. And there also, as Commissioner Quinn and others, Commissioner Cavender had raised in terms of raising the wages for crossing guards. We talked with the police department. We talked with the school district. And there's a $14,624 increase to the budget that will increase the wage that is offered to crossing guards. That won't take effect until September of 2023 because the school district budget goes from June 30th to July 1st, or July 1st to June 30th. So because we share the cost of crossing guards with the school district, that increase won't take effect until September of 2023 and then will be going forward. And then, as we discussed at the initial preliminary budget meeting and was part of the original motion, there is an $8 increase to the trash and recycling fee from the preliminary budget from 275 to 283. And that's primarily just due to the increase in anticipated recycling costs that we've seen the last couple of months. And that, you know, as part of good practice, we're not anticipating significant drops over the coming year. Obviously, we can't predict that. If it is lower, we'd be happy to pay the lower cost. But this way, we'll be prepared for that. With those changes, though, there is no change to the increase in the real estate tax. It is going up 1.83% from 4.28 to 4.295 mils. There's no, there's no change to the sewer rate and that will remain at 4.65. And as I said, the trash recycling fee will be $283. And that would cover our 2023 budget. If anybody has any comments or questions.
So hearing no questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion.
Yeah, so motion to accept any changes to the 2023 budget as, preliminary budget as outlined.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
For us now is ordinance number P-20, 2022. This would establish a sewer rental charge. Final reading.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance number P-20, 2022, authorizing the imposition of an annual sewer rate in the amount of $4.65 per 1,000 gallons of water consumed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next on our agenda is ordinance number P-21 of 2022. This is the trash fee. Final reading.
Motion to adopt the final reading of ordinance number P-21, 2022, establishing the annual trash fee at $283.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? This reflects the, this reflects the amended trash fee from 275 to 283. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next on our agenda is item number 29, I'm sorry, ordinance number 2969 of 2022. This is the tax levy. First reading is its only reading and final.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 2969, 2022, fixing the tax rate for the year 2023 at 4.295 mils.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Finally. Our last item in the budget hearing is ordinance number 2970 of 2022. This is the budget appropriation. And first reading is a final reading.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2970, 2022, appropriating funds established to be required for special purpose of financing the municipal government for the year 2023, including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided within all funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta. Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes, just now that the budget process has been voted on, I just want to reiterate our thanks to Amy Cuthbertson and Dave Berman for all the work they did in putting it together and working with all the commissioners to put together what I think is a very good budget for the year 2023.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And thank, thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. Your first time at the helm of the Finance Committee. You can vouch well for the township and for our board. Thank you all again. This is the end of the budget portion of this meeting. We now move to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. At this point, I will invite a Bureau of Fire update.
Mr. President, we haven't received it yet from them. The new software is taking a little longer the first time through, so.
That's, that sounds like progress to me, Mr. Wexler. I'm pleased that they have new software. I know that our township auditor is not with us tonight. But the township auditor did report to a number of us on the board that he had gone through the warrants. And any questions that, that his review raised were raised by him to the township staff and answered to his satisfaction. And it was his recommendation that he be, that the, that the warrants be approved. Mr. Berman?
Thank you. Leaf collection. They're finishing up in the 5th Ward. And we should have trucks into the 6th Ward tomorrow. And then they'll follow 7, 8, and 9. And on behalf of the township staff, I want to wish everybody a really happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
You're welcome. We now move to approval of minutes. We have two, two different minutes to approve. I ask that we do them one at a time. So before us first is the regular meeting minutes of November 14, 2022. Entertain a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the regular meetings. Any additions, subtractions, deletions, comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Now we move to the preliminary budget meeting minutes of November 21, 2022. That was Monday night, so that is just a typo on our agenda, isn't it?
So moved. No, it was the 21st.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments other than fixing the date? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next item on the agenda is approval of warrants.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number 12, 2022, totaling $6,517,984.50, general and sewer fund payroll for November 23, 2022, in the amount of $1,024, excuse me, general and sewer fund payroll for December 8, 2022, in the amount of $727,392.89, general fund disbursements, number 12, 2022, in the amount of $2,863,705.29, sewer fund disbursements, number 12, 2022, in the amount of $429,405.09, community development block grant fund disbursements, number 12, 2022, in the amount of $177,398.61, capital projects fund disbursements, number 12, 2022, in the amount of $73,039.75, American Rescue Plan Fund disbursment, number 12, 2022, in the amount of $190,290.31, debt service, ACH Series 2021, interest in the amount of $98,823.75, debt service, ACH Series 2021, principal in the amount of $250,000, debt service, ACH Series 2018, interest in the amount of $574,723.75, debt service, ACH Series 2020, interest in the amount of $96,246.25, credit card statement ending November 27, 2022, in the amount of $12,381.69.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Kind of struggled with my reading tonight, but otherwise I think it's all there.
Hearing no questions or comments. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is ordinance number P-11 of 2022. This is a composting ordinance, and this is its second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-11, 2022, amending ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, further amending Chapter 138, Property Maintenance, Article 4, on lock compost piles to provide for composting containers and additional compost regulations.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Congratulations, Commissioner Trombetta, on excellent work. Please extend our board's thanks to the EAC for their extraordinary work on this ordinance. And I wish everybody in the township, myself included, happy composting. We will now move to ordinance number P-19, 2022, Senior Citizens Advisory Council, and this is the second reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt ordinance number P-19, 2022, amending Chapter 35, Senior Citizen Advisory Council, to adjust, adjust the term lengths and meeting frequency of the advisory council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, we now move to resolutions. This is Resolution Number 2289 of 2022. This is a resolution addressing the 2023 meeting dates. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2289-2022, approving the 2023 Board of Commissioners, Boards, and Commissions meetings.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Deletions, subtractions, anything? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next resolution on our agenda is Resolution Number 2290 of 2022. This relates to the Holiday Shopping Gift Card Program. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2290, 2022, financial support for Discover Haverford's Local Business Holiday Shopping Gift Card Program to provide 50% matching credit on gift card purchases made from November 26, 2022 through December 25, 2022, at an amount not to exceed $25 per card or $5,000 in total, and that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of funds from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the above referenced project.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Actually, I'll, I'll jump in briefly with a comment. I'd just like to reiterate something that I brought up at the work session with regards to this particular program. I am a very big supporter of the former HBD, now Discover Haverford. I'm also a supporter of anything that helps and encourages local business. However, I just, I have two issues with this resolution. One being the timing of it, coming to the board for permission kind of after the fact. And I don't necessarily know if this is the, the best way to target tax money to support local business in, in, in a couple of different ways. But that being said, because I'm affiliated with a business that actually accepts these gift cards, I will be abstaining from this vote tonight.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Gondick. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Abstain.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
No.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Our next resolution, Resolution 2291 of 2022, the Commonwealth Financing Authority Small Water/Sewer Grant Request.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2291-2022 that Haverford Township hereby request a small water and sewer grant program grant in the amount of $250,750 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the replacement of an existing sanitary sewer main crossing Naylor's Run Creek. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate David R. Berman, the Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
We now move to purchases. There is one purchase this month. Police Department Township Building slash Police Department Medial Strip sign. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a replacement upgrade Township Police Department Medial Strip sign from Art Sign Works, Marietta, California, in the amount of $18,315 as the lowest responsible quote. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. This sign will be in accordance with the mock-up that was distributed at the, at the work session?
With a couple of minor changes. Okay. We had to tweak it a little bit. We raised it up a little bit because we're concerned about the visibility. But the same, raise it up within the same size. So it is basically the same. I'll send you the finished mock-up tomorrow.
Thank you.
Nice carving of your likeness as well, chief, right there. Of course. All right. Good, good. I was worried the first mock-up didn't have that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
We now return to Citizens Forum. Anybody in attendance tonight who would like to speak on a, on a non-agenda item or any item is invited to do so now. I will start on the left side of the room. Is there anyone on the left who'd like to speak?
Evening. My name is Todd Hall. I reside in the township. Revisit the issue of crime concerns that were brought up in past weeks. I certainly don't expect a wall or a checkpoint or a gate to be put up nor for commissioners to patrol the streets of the township themselves or be at the borders to our township in the evenings, given some of these concerns. But what I do expect would be for the commissioners not to change the narrative or bring in data that's not directly answering some of the concerns. I took a look at police briefs, police reports the last three months, and where there are arrests that are noted and the person's city of residence. 30% were Haverford Township, 70% were other locations. We've heard a response that crime can happen anywhere, We've heard a response that crime can happen anywhere, and that is the response that sometimes you see perhaps when looking at apartments or places to live, and especially for something like an apartment, that's a private business and that's an understandable response as there's limited ability for, you know, a property owner to control crime. But I don't find it to be as acceptable in a governmental type situation. We did have remarks made from the public in the last meeting or several meetings ago that amounted to what's known as othering. I actually learned about this concept when doing a diversity and anti-harassment seminar myself recently, and I did appreciate that there was a call out of that from the board. But at the same time, and I can even relate to that. I mean, I am not Catholic. Most of my neighbors are, and no one is trying to make me offended or different, but it is implied and it feels and it's real. And even though that was, again, a fair remark to make in response, I still didn't just hear a response showing concern of crime. So in conclusion, I seek a more affirmative stance from the commissioners that, you know, hate in the form of crime has no home here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anybody else on the left here would like to say anything? Anybody on the right? Okay, thank you all. Mr. Hall, I speak on behalf of the board when I tell you that hate in the form of crime has no home here. Thank you for your comments. Any last chance? Anybody else? We now move to new business. Does any commissioner have any new business to raise before the board?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Hart.
The Planning Commission has been meeting since June. I believe they've had about 10 meetings to review the comprehensive plan. At their last meeting last week, they recommended to the Board of Commissioners that they will send a, that the Board of Commissioners send the revised draft of the comprehensive plan to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, or that committee could be either the previous committee or reformulated one, to review the draft that has, during the process with the Planning Commission, there's been some tweaks to the initial comprehensive plan. So they wish to send that back to the Steering Committee to review it and also will send their comments as well as comments of all the people who have attended the Planning Commission meetings. I'll make such a motion at our January meeting.
Okay. So before us in January will be, before us in January will be the Planning Commission's official recommendation to us to do as you just described, and we'll take that action at the January meeting. Or we'll consider that action and take that action at the January meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Does any other commissioner have anything new to bring before the board? We will move to other business. I will begin with Commissioner Gondik.
I would just simply say that this past weekend, the Westgate Hill Civic Association had their tree lighting ceremony. It was a nice ceremony to attend. It was a lot of fun. A lot of people came out and enjoyed themselves, drank all the hot chocolate. So that's always a good sign. As we come up along the holidays at the end of the month, I'd just like to wish everyone happy holidays, whatever holiday you may be celebrating, and then also just indicate a Happy New Year to everyone. Please, you know, in these holiday times, just be safe, drive responsibly, and enjoy the time with friends and family. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Gondik. Mr. Forstie Grub.
I would like to extend a thank you to the Landarch Fire Company for bringing holiday cheer through Ward Two yesterday. It was lovely to see the fire trucks come through with Santa and the elves distributing candy canes to everybody. I'd also like to thank Discover Haverford for their amazing work bringing our first holiday festival, and I know other commissioners will talk about it, but it was an awful lot of fun, so I look forward to the festival returning next year. I'm also very pleased to say that the Penzi Trail Project has now advertised on PennDOT's Engineering and Construction Management System, and that the project looks like it will be awarded in the middle of January of next year. And with any luck, we will have construction start sometime in the spring with a completion date in September of 2024. This is a very significant project that will install a 10-foot-wide asphalt shared-use trail along the former railroad bed and install a steel truss bridge over Manoa Road. It will also install retaining walls, curb, sidewalk, stormwater management basin, and it's going to be a very, very exciting development that will allow people to bicycle and walk from, basically, right around the Burger King all the way through to the Y. It's very exciting. So it's good stuff for Haverford Township. So thank you very much, and everyone have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grub. Commissioner McCluskey.
Yeah, I'll just echo the comments regarding the holiday festival and for everyone that had a hand in putting that together and working at it. Express our appreciation, and it's another wonderful event to add to the Haverford Township calendar of things that we're now putting forth as a community. So also just shout out to Kevin Nolan and the people that put together the Reindeer Round for another successful run over the weekend in Haverford Township. A lot of people out celebrating, having a good time. And then just an appreciation for everybody on this board and everybody in the township, from the department heads that come to these meetings, but also to all the township employees who, on a daily basis, do all the tasks that are really essential to running the township, from picking up the trash, to patrolling the streets, to running our parks. Talked about Jason O'Brien earlier and all the unseen things he does for our parks, and that's just one example of the quality of people that we have working in this township. And I know I certainly have appreciation for all of them, and hopefully, you know, just wanted to say that I also have an appreciation for everyone on this board and for the year that we've had. In terms of 2022, I think we accomplished some good things together, and hopefully we will in 2023. Also to all the residents and everyone in town, everyone all in the area. I hope everyone has a wonderful month here coming up for all the holidays and a happy and healthy New Year, and hopefully some new big things ahead in 2023. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I don't think I could say it any better than Commissioner McCluskey in saying thank you to township staff and also in appreciation for the work with everybody up here and what we've been able to do this year. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Haverford Road, PennDOT is recommending a road diet, and they're going to start a public, start with public meetings in January to look at how to make Haverford Road safer all the way through Haverford Township. Turn lanes, they have traffic calming measures, intersection improvements. So I just want to encourage all residents of the township to weigh in and listen in and make your concerns known. Certainly, no one knows the roads better than those of us who drive them all the time. So I would just encourage you to get involved. Just a side note, I was at Haverford Middle School last week for the seminar students in sixth grade, and I did not meet this student, but I saw his presentation, and he actually had a well-researched, well-thought-out presentation on sidewalks along Haverford Roads, though. I think we know where the kids are coming from on that. So anyway, that's great, and I think the township will be announcing the opportunity for public comments at that meeting. Also, over the last couple of weeks, we've been interviewing township residents who want to serve on boards and commissions, and I just want to say thank you to all the residents who participate, who give their time to boards and commissions, who have taken that step to get involved. It is something that I've seen over the last year and that I'm really, I'm really heartened by, just the number of considered thoughtful residents we have who want to give their time to make the township better. And that includes everybody here who comes to these meetings as well. Parks and Open Space Plan, I'm going to give another shout out for that input on that plan. In the fifth ward, our parks include Preston Field, Preston Park Polo Field, and Elwell Field. That meeting is on January 11th. And happy holidays to everyone. I'm looking forward to all of our work together in 2023. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody that came out to the fest, to the fest, festival of this past week, and it was a huge, it was a success. And thank you to all who put that on and did such a great, great job, the police, and everybody made that go smooth, and it took place in another best ward in another town. So I was thrilled about that. And Brookline will be bringing Santa around for this Sunday at, beginning at noon. So go, so go, so go out, and I'm sure you'll hear all the sirens around town. So and then, and then the other thing is the plastic bag ban goes into effect at the beginning of the year, so I know everybody's thrilled to hear that from me. So but I just want everybody to know that that will be beginning to take place. And I just want to thank the staff. You guys are great, and we're thrilled to have such a great, great team here, led by Dave, led by this board, the chief. And you guys all make this town smooth, and I can't wait to start a new, a new, new and fun, fun and a fun year with this crowd up here on this board. And I hope Santa brings everybody a nice gift, so that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, the Brookline Park Committee had their second public meeting last week. Had very lively discussion amongst probably 60 or 70 residents. The next steps, the Steering Committee will be meeting again with the consultant, reviewing the input from that last meeting, and there will be two additional public meetings next month. It's not going to be until March. And otherwise, everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. See you next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler.
Yes, I'd just like to update. There's progress brewing on the intersection improvement at Vermont and Glendale Road. Township staff has been working hard. Vendor evaluations, we're going for the design phase, and now the staff is now entering into the financial negotiations. As you know, the bids come in for the valuation, and then we go to, they come in without pricing. Now, the staff, Mr. Berman and his staff, will negotiate pricing with the vendor, who will then pick the design and work with us to come up with the best design for that intersection improvement. So just want to update that that has been moving. It's been slow with PennDOT, but we've got their approval now, and we've picked a vendor and now negotiating. I'd also like to thank the volunteers. As we go through the interview process, it's amazing how many people are now volunteering. We've got a lot of young people, young compared to me, that have moved into the township that are very interested in working in all our departments, Parks and Rec, Skidium, planning, zoning. They want to get involved. It's good to see the next generations coming in. And then also, I'd like to thank the people who are here. Civic involvement is great. It's good to see people here. It's, you know, our work sessions are lightly attended, but it's obvious that people care. And even though not all of us have time to volunteer on boards and commissions, I still like to thank you for your civic engagement of coming here, questioning us, and doing what good government is all about. It's working for you, the people. So thank you very much for coming. I'd also like to thank the two volunteer fire companies in my ward, the Bon Air Fire Company and Manoa Fire Company, who is out tonight, blasting the sirens and taking Santa around the ninth ward. Bon Air did it over the weekend, and they'll continue to do it a couple more nights this week for the kids. And then I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and also I'm seeing a lot of college students coming back already. I guess they finished early exams. So, you know, their safety is, I pray for them. It's a rough time for young people. It's a fun time, but just keep those kids under your umbrellas and make sure that they make good, safe decisions for all of us in this township, and have a great holiday period. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Mr. Trombetta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm closing out my first year as commissioner, and I just want to thank my constituents and the residents of Haverford Township for affording me this privilege, and I'm really thankful, especially to the township staff who have supported me throughout this time and supported the needs of our township residents. So thank you for that, and I especially want to give a shout out again to Discover Haverford for amazing holiday festival. I'm proud to be serving on their board and helping to support their vision, and it really was a fantastic event. I also want to give a shout out to the Environmental Advisory Committee, who I've had the opportunity to work with this past year. And thanks to them, we've passed two major pieces of legislation, the composting ordinance, and then the ordinance that will go into effect on January 2nd, what I call the Plastic Pollution Reduction Ordinance. It not only is a plastic bag ban, but it also has something that reduces the likeliness of people taking up plastic straws. So you can still get plastic straws in Haverford Township, but you will be asked to make a request when you want one or need one. It also eliminates the use of plastic spurs in our township, which really hopefully is not too hard on anybody in any business. You will be able to get paper bags for a $0.10 fee at our local businesses, but I would encourage you to bring your own reusable bags. Just stuff them in your car trunk, and, you know, it should be pretty simple. But I think that this is critically important, and I'm thankful again to the EAC for helping to move this along. I think that, you know, every little thing that we can do on the township level to address climate change is absolutely essential. Finally, a few thank you slash announcements. So thank you to Oakmont Fire Company for going out into parts of Haverford Township's fourth ward to bring Santa and his helpers. So they did that yesterday, and I got to see them out and about. Manoa Fire Company, as Wexler mentioned, is out tonight in parts of the fourth ward, and will be out again on the 18th for the other portion of the fourth ward. So have a look out for Santa on one of our fire trucks. I also wanted to mention the Jingle Mingle, which was scheduled for this yesterday, was postponed and will be occurring on December 18th at Paddock Park from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I also wanted to give a shout out to The Grange. I think we suffered a little bit of the recency effect with Discover Haverford, which was an incredible event, but The Grange also hosted an amazing holiday festival recently. And I can't speak enough for the trains there. It's really a fantastic showing. And so thank you to the board that puts that on. And I should mention that that continues throughout the holiday season. So go check it out if you haven't already. So happy holidays to everybody, and thank you again for affording me this opportunity for my first year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trombetta. Before I wrap up the meeting, I just, let me announce, our reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be on Tuesday, January 3rd, not Monday, January 2nd. I hope for everybody, January 2nd is a holiday. It is for us here in the township. At that meeting is when we will be filling our boards and commissions. And as was mentioned earlier, we have been in the throes of interviews of a number of people who were either seeking reappointment to the boards or seeking first time to volunteer for the township. I appreciate greatly their candidacy and their enthusiasm for the job, and our boards and commissioners, our boards and commissions make our job that much easier because they concentrate in one particular area and are often the source of excellent expertise in areas where the board could use that expertise. So I thank all of them for their work, and I thank all of the people willing to interview for and serve on those boards. As a couple of my colleagues have done, I would also like to thank all the members of the public who, but for their votes and support, none of us would be up here doing this job currently on the board. I would also like to note, five of the nine members of this board are currently in their first term, four of them in their first year. I want to thank them for their service and for diving in to a time in this township where a great deal of thought and energy and enthusiasm was necessary, and they all delivered it, along with my veteran colleagues. It has been a privilege to serve as your president, and I appreciate that opportunity very much. Finally, thank you all to the staff and to all of my colleagues in the township who help deliver extraordinary services to our township so it continues to be the best place in Pennsylvania to live, perhaps in the United States even. So happy holidays to all. I will not attempt to provide appropriate greetings for every type of holiday people that people celebrate or recognize. I will just do one that I hope is universal. Peace on earth and goodwill to all. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So we are adjourned.